Mitch?
Well...
That's right, Ray and Mitch.
I'm not nearly as good-looking as Councilor Bowles is. But he's not here tonight, so I'd like to introduce his student and my student as well. His student is Patrick Moon, who's sitting behind me. He's a senior at Portsmouth High School from Newington. He's graduating with a full scholarship to the University of New Hampshire. He's gonna be studying, at least initially, he thinks, either civil engineering or chemical engineering, and he has his eyes set on going to medical school. He's been doing taekwondo for 11 years. He's a black belt and believes that that kind of exercise really does help in his academic studies, because it really does help in terms of self-discipline.
Welcome.
Oh, I still need this.
Oh, Mitch.
Thank you. So now I'd like to introduce my student tonight. It's Katie Maderos, who's a freshman at Portsmouth High School, comes from Greenland, has been involved in sports, plays soccer and basketball and softball, likes English, enjoys art, feels it's important to be creative. Would like to go to college in New York City. I'm gonna hold her to the fact that she's going to go to college. And also, Mrs. Foley suggested that she participate, and we all know it's good to listen to your teacher.
Thank you, and welcome. Anne, I'm Nancy.
Well, right now, I'm Steve Bartlett, who is ill tonight, our new business manager. He's not feeling well. I would like to introduce his student, who is Hannah Ken. Hannah's a freshman at Portsmouth High School. She is president of her class. She also is on the varsity lacrosse team, and she plays basketball and soccer for Portsmouth High this year. She's in peer mediation, and she thinks she would like to go into psychiatry someday. She likes her health class a lot. She said that's her favorite class at Portsmouth High. You may know her mom, Nancy Pollak, who is an art teacher at Portsmouth Middle School. I think Nancy's sitting right there. And also, Hannah's sister, Sandra Ken, graduated from Portsmouth High a few years ago and is currently at Brandeis University, so we're very proud of Sandra and all she's done, and we're sure Hannah will follow in her footsteps. So Hannah, can you stand up for a second?
Welcome.
She's so cute. And my student is Meredith Legg. Meredith is right here. Some of you may know her parents, Dexter and Ellen Legg. They've been involved in our schools for many, many years. Meredith is a junior. She plays lacrosse. She's on, as she said, the infamous swim team. She row's crew for the Great Bay Rowing Association. She's in peer leadership. She's in the National Honor Society. She likes to babysit. She wants to study biology and would like to become a doctor. She loves people, science, and travel. And her sister is Catherine Legg, who graduated a few years ago from Portsmouth High, and she's an English major at Worcester College in Ohio, and she's graduating this year from college, so we wish her luck, too. So, thank you, Meredith, for being here.
Thank you, and welcome. Gonna go down the other end of the table here and start with our employee rep, Linda Berlatt.
Thank you. My shadow is going to be Rory Armstrong. She is going to Temple University next year, and she was accepted at six schools. She is declared a business major, but she's not really sure that that's what she wants to do. Is from Greenland. She has played lacrosse, but said she didn't do that this year. She's in student council and yearbook this year.
Welcome.
My student shadow tonight is Abby Rockefeller, a fellow Greenlander and a member of the Class of 2009. I just had a class with her and intro to welding, so, but besides welding, her interests include journalism and culinary arts, and she's a member of the field hockey team.
Andrew, and welcome. Sherry.
I'm the only one without a student tonight. I have Rachel Sacks, a real shadow. Rachel is a senior at the high school, and tonight she is at a dress rehearsal for a concert that will be at the high school tomorrow night. She's also the senior class president. She likes English, foreign languages, and history. This would be her first year doing Student Government Day. She's also in the New Hampshire Theater Project for several years, and she's in drama. She's also part of the Migos Club at school. She's been accepted, I believe, to two colleges and is deciding which one to pick, and she's picking a college based on that school with her pursuit of the theater. So both colleges are for the theater. And I will be meeting Rachel tomorrow.
Thank you, Sherry. Brendan?
My student this evening is Alex Mills. Alex is a sophomore at Portsmouth High School. She resides in Greenland. She is a cheerleader for the... She cheerleads during football season. She's also the baseball manager and loves baseball, and I made sure that she liked the Red Sox, so... And last year, she was the principal in Greenland, so...
Thank you, and welcome. Anne?
My student is Rachel Kaiser. Behind me. She's a freshman from Greenland, has been involved in cheerleading on the ski club, plays the piano, enjoys singing. Her favorite subjects are English and science, which is really good, because she'd like to be a pediatrician, and I think she'd be a great one. So, Rachel.
Welcome. Steve?
My student this evening is Anna Greenslake. She is a senior at Portsmouth High School, lives here in Portsmouth, enjoys phys ed and is a lifeguard. She also plays field hockey and rec basketball. She has a long history of schooling in Portsmouth, having attended the middle school as well as Dondaro Elementary School, and has been accepted and is considering going to URI next year, thinking about majoring in communications and fashion merchandising.
Welcome. Patty. Oh, Patty, you're absent this year, okay? Dr. Lister?
Well, good evening. I'd like to introduce the superintendent of schools for Student Government Day, Nora Happney, who's behind me. Nora is a senior at Portsmouth High School. She is from a very talented family. Her parents are very involved in the schools. Her mother was an artist, and her father made this in Meckelus. So I would say that there's some talent in that family. And she's also very talented herself, and I was very pleased when she called me recently and asked me if I would write a letter of recommendation for her scholarship, which I was glad to do. She plays field hockey and lacrosse. She's a captain on both of those teams. She's president of the student council. She would like to acknowledge Mary Carrie Foley for thanks and thank her for putting this together. Last year, Nora was the city manager for Student Government Day, and she's a member of the National Honor Society, who recently, last weekend, put on a benefit for the Cinderella Project, which is to raise money for disadvantaged students to get... Have access to prom gowns and prom items. And we're very glad to have her here this evening, and we look forward to working with her as superintendent on Student Government Day.
Well, my student has not been a... Oh, I'm sorry.
Welcome.
Yep, right behind me. My student also has been delayed. She's representing, it's Lisa Lozer. She's a student from Rye. She's on the National Honor Society, and she's representing us today at a tennis match, and she will be here, and when she gets here, I will introduce her at that time.
I want to thank all you students for taking time and coming tonight. If any of you have to leave during this, we have somewhat of a condensed agenda tonight. It shouldn't be too lengthy, but we understand that, first of all, come studies and that you need to prepare for the big world out there. John?
Just for the public, Mr. Chair, there are a whole number of other students who are participating, and the work that Ms. Foley does is just outstanding. As I'm looking at the list here, we have principals, we have athletic trainers, media coordinators. There is a shadow for the SAU 50 Superintendent and the Rye Greenland-Newington there, and then we have all of the students who are on the city side as well. There's gotta be at least 50 students approximately in that...
Sixty-one, I counted.
Sixty-one, so... Folks should know that there are a lot of kids involved in this absolutely terrific effort, and Ms. Foley brings these wonderful students to us year after year, which is really special for us as well.
And I'd just like to go on to that with the number of students that are out there, the 61 students that I counted, is that there is a process that students apply to do this, as I understand, and that, you know, it's a very fair, and that students that don't make it one year are encouraged to come back the next year, and quite often are selected, and that this is not just a one-day thing, that they have to meet, they have to go ahead and prepare to interview, to take these positions, then they have to come and sit with us or our colleagues on the city council side, or any one of the city workers that are listed here, and then they have to prepare the day to do their agenda. So it's not, you know, something that I hope the public would ever think is something that's done in a one-day fashion. This is well thought out, and it gives them a taste of politics at its best. We thank you for representing us. Well, you work okay, you know? Good roots. Item two, secretary's report, approval of the March 28, 2006 meeting. Any discussion corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Under correspondence tonight, we have a few things. I'm just making sure there's one thing that we had hoped to be in the packet. Did this get in the packet, Patty? Appro... I'm sorry, communications. We have a... For those seniors that are sitting with us and those that are at home watching, we have the Piscataqua Savings Bank Scholarship that's going to be released, that will be worked through, and there will be... Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, see, there is an application that will be out in the next couple of weeks for students to apply. We want to thank the Piscataqua Savings Bank. They do an outstanding job in the community, and we're very proud that they are a partner with us.
Move to accept and place on file, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'll also ask that a letter of thanks go to Jay Gibson, president and CEO. Jay's a great guy, so I'll ask that that follow. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. And there are seven criteria to be accepted for that scholarship. Communication number four is in your packet tonight, or you've got number four from Dr. Lister. This is a communication that Bob just has taken off with, a communication that we're hearing great praise, and do we have number five yet? Tomorrow morning. Number five will be released tomorrow morning. You're getting these edited and, you know, public, okay? It's... It is very nice, keeps the community abreast of what's going on, and I really appreciate his diligence in getting that done. Any comments in regards to his communications? John, and then Nancy.
Mr. Superintendent, would you just let folks know who you're sending this to?
Yes. This is... We started this four weeks ago when we began the transition at the high school, and it's a listing of several different activities that are happening at the high school. We're trying to make people aware of the many positive activities that are occurring at the high school, as well as in the middle school and the elementary schools, but specifically in this... This communication goes out to parents at the high school and the middle school through email, and we've asked people to share it with other people who may not have email. We will plan to put this online, so people have access to it, but it's really an effort to make people aware of the activities that are going on in school, out of school, sports, drama, academics, just to keep people informed, and we're trying to... We're working to keep everything at the high school very positive. We've had a great transition there, and it's mainly due to the students, who have been tremendous through the transition, the faculty, the teachers, and certainly the community working together. So we appreciate that.
Thank you. Nancy?
I just want to say, as a parent, this is incredible. It certainly gives us information about what's going on in the high school, and as Bob said and everyone has been saying, many of the positive aspects of what goes on at Portsmouth High School, and as a parent, it's just really gratifying to read something like this once a week, and I just want to thank Bob for putting it together, and we really appreciate you doing that, Bob.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Can I just add that the elementary principals, the middle school principal, are also putting these out on a regular basis to inform parents about the activities that are happening in the school, so this is a district-wide effort.
Again, our appreciation, Bob, and your busy schedule to get out and communicate. We know that's an important thing. I'm gonna take a little chairman's prerogative for just a second. My student just showed up. How we doing at the tennis match, Alisa?
I did very well. I won my match, so...
She won her match, so... I mean, isn't that winning it counts, but it does count at times. Okay. This is Alisa Lozer. She is from Rye, and she will be representing us as the chairperson of the school board during Student Government Day. What she doesn't know is she has to be up at 3:30, because if she's gonna represent me, I want her in the same shape I am most days, getting the milk ready in the morning, so, see you at 3:30. We'll talk. I'm sorry, Anne?
Chairman Page, I had just had a question. Have we been able to address the citizens that don't have email and don't have access? Are there copies of any of this material? You said now that's the high school and the elementary schools are sending these out, but I think we do... When we were on... I was on the PTO, there is a small segment of the population that does not have email.
We do have copies in the schools, and I've made that announcement in this publication that if you know someone who doesn't have email, that you could... If you could share that with people, we've asked the PTOs to do that, we've asked the people at the high school to do that as well, and the middle school, so... And this is just being sent to the middle school.
I see middle schoolers and elementary students taking a copy home. I don't see that happening in the high school. I mean, I don't... Wouldn't guess.
Maybe we can make it available.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. It was requested by a number of board members to get a listing of coaching staffs that we currently have that work for us. You have that in your packet tonight, showing both, again, fall, winter, and spring. You also have your athletic schedule, and they, again, please try to attend these events. I know I tried to attend, and I have for over... It's hard to say, 30 years, attended track events as both a participant, a parent, and just a person who is a state official, and in the springtime, watching a baseball game seems to be natural, a lacrosse game, and again, a number of these sports are just fantastic to sit and watch. Tennis matches, I usually get one in a season, and again, lacrosse, softball, we appreciate it, what these students do, but we also appreciate what the coaches do for us, because it is, you know, a grueling schedule to get in after the regular school day. So again, your coaches and contracts or your coaches' listings are here on what sport they represent. Is there any discussion in regards to the coaches? Seeing none? We... I'm sorry, Nancy?
I would like to make a motion that we move item four...
One other item that was not in your packet tonight, that was going to be, and we will make sure that you get this, because it was requested, and I just got it today. I will read it. It is from the library staff, and again, as it is always tough that when we go through budgets, so I deeply feel for this, but again, let me read it to you, and then I will pass it, and we will make sure that you get these. I don't want to let it go. Dear Chairman Page and school board members, we were disappointed to learn you chose to cut the request for elementary school librarian positions for the next year's budget. Although it may be too late to reinstate these positions for the coming school year, we would like to reiterate why we feel the positions are important to our students and teachers. Unlike many positions in the school districts, that of the elementary school librarian affects each and every Portsmouth student. Having a building-level school librarian position at the elementary school enables all students to develop the skills that will lay the foundations for their growth as lifelong learners. The librarian, library media specialist also assists all teachers and integrates literacy and technology into the curriculum. We recognize that the budgeting process is a difficult one. We appreciate the time you have taken to listen to our concerns and support you have extended to us as we try to expand and update our collections. Let us continue to keep the lines of communication open. Sincerely, Joanne Chris, Kathy Pierce, and Kelly Pilgrim. All signed, and again, it was given to all principals, and I just got it today, and unfortunately we didn't get it into your packets, but again, we will send copies to you. Is there a motion to accept and place on file?
So moved, second.
Moving to second discussion. Mitch?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but my memory says that we did not cut both elementary library positions, and that one of the media library positions was voted for.
That's correct. They're just talking about the one and the elementary ones that got cut, I believe, so it comes out.
Right. But again, my... According to my memory, in our conversations, what I remember was that it seemed like a balanced toss-up between those two, that the position, either the elementary media position or the elementary library position could in fact be the same type of position. So my sense was that in fact, we were giving the district another full-time librarian. Am I wrong?
I'd have to pass to the superintendent, because I can't remember fully the discussion on that.
We did talk about keeping one in the budget, keeping one in the budget. But again, one librarian, but we have to go back and revisit that. We haven't done anything definitely about any of those positions.
And we have to remember that the budget is final until the city council, but, I mean, again, I think, again, when we get a letter like this, it's important that they're listening, they're paying attention, and they did an outstanding presentation that the night of, we all wanted to bring it on, but we looked at it. But again, it's one that I appreciate their hearts that sit on this every day. It's been moved to accept and place on file. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, pass unanimously. Any further... I'm sorry, any further correspondence? Did you also have something?
No, nope.
Now do you want me to go?
Yo.
I would like to make a motion that we move item four up to where we are right now, just before item three, the public commentary session.
Requested.
Moved in second of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, passes unanimously. We're moving a public commentary session. Tonight, I only have two speakers. I have Deborah Twombly and students from the Science Day at Dondaro, and they'll be the first speakers.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Twombly, fourth-grade teacher at Dondaro School, and I am here to invite you to a very exciting Science Day that's happening. Mark your calendars, Friday, May 26th, at 9:15 until 3:00, all day long. There'll be scientists at the school, and this has been organized with a large group, a large committee of teachers, as well as Janet Littlefield organizing a large group of parents, and we've been working closely together to bring scientists from a variety of fields to offer demonstrations and lessons and hands-on experiences for everybody, kindergarten through fifth grade at the school, so we certainly welcome you. And also here tonight, Amy Jones, third-grade class, is here to offer you each individual invitations.
They'd like to come forward. We appreciate it.
I can relate.
I am close to Littlefield. I will... I wonder if you'd like to... Go see the moon rocks.
You have invitations for us, right?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
Who are you looking for?
We're gonna see some moon rocks? Excellent. Thank you.
I'm Caitlin Jackson. I think you would be interested in the bubble... Bubbles. The grade goes to kindergarten through grade two. Sorry for the people over that grade who wants to do it. Thank you.
Right over here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Timothy Lampert. I'm in third grade in Dondaro School. And I'd like to invite you to Science Day. I hope you enjoy the models and the lobster. I hope you... I hope you enjoy our science show.
Thank you.
My name is Alex Park. I think you might like to come to the astronomy workshop on Science Day at Dondaro.
Hi, I'm Shannon Hatch, and I'm in Dondaro School. This is an invitation to Bubbles at Dondaro School on Science Day.
Hi, my name is Ariana Munoz, and I was wondering if you would be interested in the lobster exhibit?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope you can all come to. It's gonna be a wonderful day, and I just want to take this opportunity in front of the school board to thank Deb Twombly, fourth-grade teacher at Dondaro, for the wonderful job she's done. We wouldn't have this day without her, the time and energy that she put into this, along with Janet Littlefield and the other committee members are wonderful, so thank you very much.
We thank you. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank each and every student that came forward to the mic, because one of the toughest things to do is to do public speaking, and I'm sure you'll all go home and may be able to watch this back on the government channel 22, but it's a very tough thing. You're here inviting us, and you all did a wonderful job to invite us, and talking to the public like that is a great experience, and I hope you keep doing that, because that's how you get your ideas and thoughts ahead. Appreciate your time. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Steve?
Just as... It's a nice connection with the students behind us to emphasize the point that on the Science Day, we'll also have high school teachers and students involved at Dondaro with these students as well, so sharing what they know.
Thank you for that update, Steve. And all you guys and gals behind us remember when you were back there, right? Well, it wasn't that long ago. We thank you. Under public speaking, the next speaker I have is Mark Brighton, Middle School. Renovation.
I only hope I can do half as good a job as the students who just preceded me, and I feel privileged to be addressing the students and the school board, and I wish you kids good luck in your endeavor. I would respectfully ask the school board to give serious reconsideration to the renovation of the middle school. It would be nice if we could have all-new schools in the fall for the kids to go to, but we know that isn't a possibility. And while I agree with Board Member Schuman's assertion in the paper that school policy cannot be driven by building size, what it is driven by and what it should be driven by is what the taxpayer can afford. You school board members do have an obligation to the students of this city to provide a quality education, but you also have an equal obligation to the taxpayers. And the case for renovation is compelling. There is the history of the building, the fact that generations of Portsmouth residents have been educated there. There is the building itself. have been educated there. There is the building itself, I mean, it's just a beautiful building. And there is not that small matter that Board Member Bowles addressed, and it's the psyche of the community. If we keep the middle school there, then the parents and the students maintain a connection. I mean, it's just in the center, so there is a connection to the city. And lastly, Board Member Schulman did say he's keeping an open mind on possible renovation. And I would ask each and every one of you to please do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Seeing no other public commentaries, I clear, public commentary session closed. And if you students need to go home and study or relax, have a great day tomorrow at Don Darrow. Next, under item 3, back on track, recognition of staff and students. We have an update on the elementary progress report. Dr. Lister.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, students, for being here with us this evening and your teachers. We do have an update on the elementary progress report that has been used. We did say that when this group came before us last year, that they would come before us in several months to give us an update, and they do have some information and some data to report to us. I guess at this point, I would like to introduce Mrs. Burdick, who's the principal of Little Harbor School, Mrs. Lemay, who's the principal of Don Darrow School, and Mr. Shea, who's the principal of New Franklin School. And if they want to begin and introduce other members of the team.
Good evening. We're pleased to be back to give you a brief update on what's been going on in the elementary schools with our elementary progress report card. And our committee has worked on a very brief presentation. You'll have a chance to ask questions, and Nicole is getting things set up. We know that everything will work first time, because George Shea is here to bail us out.
Thank you, Linda.
First two. I think you actually have to go up on one. And the next one. One more.
Linda, you look marvelous.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
How are you?
Thank you.
Oh, good evening, Chairman, and Dr. Lister, Dr. Zadovac, and the chairman of the school board. We'd like to just recap what we told you before about the history of this, because I think many of you weren't here last time we talked about this. The history is that we had many frustrations with the content and the format of the previous elementary report card. It didn't reflect the state and the national standards. Neither did it reflect the way that Portsmouth teachers have come to teach and all the skills that they are given to kids and how they would grade that. It was very general, and it really didn't give kids an idea of how they were doing in what they were doing. And in 2000, the Don Darrow School Improvement Plan, the committee that we're on, which is the same as the teaching and learning in other schools, we began to research and report our findings. We did action research, which was the topic of our SIP enrollment, or what we were doing at the time. And what that is, is that the teachers take research into their own teaching to be able to find the ability to change something that will really be important, rather than from the ivory towers down. We researched effective assessing and reporting systems. We surveyed and interviewed teachers throughout the district. We interviewed and surveyed teachers and parents. We collected samples from other districts across the state and across the country. We researched professional literature, and we did this all to determine factors in successful reporting and assessing systems. We presented these findings to the three elementary schools, and at that time, might seem like an age ago, but to the school board as well. And, oh, that's when we came into being. The Report Card Committee was formed to work for change, and I think one of the most exciting things about this committee is that it brought Don Darrow and Little Harbor and New Franklin all together, which in my history as a teacher at Don Darrow has not happened, and I think it's been a really strong bond together. It's been wonderful. So, as well as the administration, which is great to have all three schools. So, teacher groups across the district met, and they gave their input over at central office, and we all had, so all the teachers had input on what would be the best things. Parents and students were surveyed. It was kind of fun. The kids had their way of, there was a special survey for the kids, that they were able to tell what was most important to them in their learning and how it would be best reported to them. And then, we're almost here. In 2005, the Elementary Progress Report Card Committee, we drafted a pilot, hammered it out over the summer, and it was, the pilot was approved on 10/405, and we issued it in December and March. And that brings us up to where we are right now.
Doing a little multitasking.
Okay. Hello? Just to give you an idea of the kind of feedback we received, teachers, parents, and students were all surveyed on how they felt the report card reflected their learning, their progress, and what it actually said to them, how they felt about it compared to the old one. And we took that task very seriously, of course. From our feedback, we compiled the most frequently expressed comments at all three schools, and all, what you're about to see was also sent out to parents with the second issuing of the report card just a few weeks ago. First of all, families and teachers found the use of the letter "S" for both "sometimes" and "secure" was confusing. And if you look at the last page of your packet on the report card, you see that, and it was, we were kind of surprised that we had overlooked that, of course, but nevertheless, it was a comment, and we're working on it. Families and teachers also recommend that the descriptors appear on both the front side and the back side of the report card for easy reference. They also recommend that we add a fourth descriptor to the learning behaviors and the unified arts section. Consistently, "sometimes" and rarely, just didn't cut it, so we thought adding a fourth, they thought adding a fourth would be necessary, and further discussion of that, we'll address that in a few minutes. Families also would like to have a better understanding about, of what the expectations are for each particular term, and we are currently in the process of deciding how this can best be conveyed to our families. And it was also recommended that we align the parent conference date with the distribution of the first trimester progress report. And the recommendation was forwarded to the school board for inclusion on the calendar for next year, and that'll be addressed in a few minutes as well. We also asked students in our classes to give some specific feedback if they could, aside from what they may have filled out with parents on surveys, and their feedback reflected many of the same points noted by parents and staff. In particular, some thought, some thought it was wordy, some liked it being wordy, some didn't. So, it was a mixed bag from some kids, but they did note that it helped them understand what they really needed to work on when they sat down and talked to their parents about their progress in school. So, we found that to be quite important. So, now, what's next?
Hi, I'm Margot Carrier from New Franklin. Our next step in this phase of the progress report development will be to express and deal with all of these concerns from the families and students and staff, and carefully look over what they had given us for input and recommendations. We've already made a few changes, one of which is the conference date and the distribution of the report cards. They need to be, the report card needs to be distributed at the same time that we have our parent conference date in the fall. So, that's one of the changes that we've already made. And as Nicole was saying, that we've added a fourth descriptor. We've gone from consistently, sometimes and rarely, for the learning behaviors and the unified arts, to having consistently or consistently, and then the second one would be often or frequently. We haven't quite worked that one out. Inconsistently and rarely. Another aspect of what we need to deal with next is the technology issues. We did the best we could with available technology and our own expertise, but we really need a higher level here to deal with putting out a high-quality report card. We found that we got a lot of feedback from teachers about the difficulties in using the report card, doing it on the computer. The drop-down menus took too long. There'd be difficulties with spacing. You can't spell-check on it, and what ended up happening is we had many, I'd say a majority of teachers actually doing them by hand, instead taking hours. This is, the report card is much more in-depth, so it's time-consuming anyway. And without having the technological help that we need, it really taxed us timewise in being able to get these done and ready to go out. So, we did find it very inefficient and frustrating, and lots of little glitches that just, we threw our hands up about it, and hope that we'll have some support in getting this dealt with, so that we have a very fine representation for the report card. We also want to make sure that the actual format, the appearance, looks highly professional, too, so that will be worked out, too.
And Chairman LePage, Superintendent Lister, and school board members, that's the end of our brief presentation. I apologize to the committee and to you for not doing a thorough introduction. Here, being our technology guru tonight, is Nicole Smith from Little Harbor School. We have Anna Nuttall, also from Little Harbor School. We have Linda Marconi from Little Harbor, Barbara Early from Don Darrow, and you just met Margot Carrier from New Franklin School. And we will all do our best to answer any questions that you may have.
Hit the lights up. If we can hit the lights up. Questions at this time. Sherry.
Had you decided that you were gonna go with three report cards per year? And could you tell me when those go out? What months or what timeframes?
A reminder, you have to be at the mic, otherwise at home, they won't hear you. Oh, there you go.
It's out in December, in early December. The second one just went out mid-March, and the last one will go out at the very end of the year. So, it's on a trimester basis.
And did parents comment on this at all? Was this ever a concern that they were only getting three updates per year as compared to four? It really wasn't a concern of theirs as parents. I was just thinking more of the parents.
We got a lot of feedback, and that really was not a concern. And we neglected to tell you, we've got tons of positive feedback from parents about things that they liked about this report card. We only brought the concerns to you to save time, but we've got lots of positive feedback.
Mitch?
Just so I understand better. So, what you're saying in terms of the technology you hear is that you don't like the physical design that you've come up with, and you feel that you need a professional to redesign it so that it's easier to read and all the information sticks out better?
We feel very strongly, and we need a technology director, that we used to have in Ed Stokel, that has not been replaced. And, you know, we do our best, but we're teaching most of the time, and thank you for George, because he's the one that really understands this stuff. But I think... Didn't he used to be the computer teacher? I mean, so we need somebody that's gotta come up, that, I mean, it's, we should be able to find somebody that'll help us, because we'll put in all that extra effort. But we need someone that's gonna be able to do the big plan for us and be able to get some of the small formatting things, or the things for the drop-down menu. I mean, those, for somebody who knows technology really well, that shouldn't be hard at all. So, that's what we really need.
That's, okay. So, again, I'm only asking these because I wasn't here last year, so I don't know what the conversation was. So, when you talk about drop-down menus, are you saying that this is online and teachers are filling this out online? No, you're not saying that?
It has to go through a server, and George could explain it to you, but I, when you push the drop-down menu, it might take 45 seconds before that comes down, because it's going to the server and then coming back.
Because the network is so slow.
So, if you're filling out 40 marks, I tried one at school, and it took me about 45 minutes just to do the marks for one child.
So, that's an issue of communication over the network, and it's not fast enough to respond to human speed?
I don't know. It's something, they told us it was something to do the way it was designed.
No, no, I deal with that every day. It's a horrible thing. It's the worst part of technology.
Right.
But, okay, so it's an online report card, and you click a drop menu, and the choice comes up consistently, sometimes rarely, and that's what you're trying to choose, and sometimes it takes 45 seconds for each one, because you're waiting.
It's sort of online. It's a Word document with fields in it, and currently has 199 drop-down menus, which is big.
Right.
There's, you know, it's a great report card, and that design's fine, but it doesn't play nicely with our network protocols right now. If you take it, the documents, and take them off the network, they're fine. Everything works beautifully. That's why if you have it...
You mean doing it on your desktop directly?
Yes, through our ACAD server. It doesn't work well at all. So, that's something with protocols that the network technicians, I think, once someone actually just focuses on this, I think it'll be a pretty quick fix.
Okay.
Because the document itself is fine, and you take it anywhere else, it works beautifully. But there's also the storage issue that came up at the end there, on that last slide, about how do we archive all these, and how do we organize the database of all the old report cards, which, again, just, there just needs to be a human focused on that task, because these guys are all very busy managing children most of the time, and they do a great job of putting this stuff together, but it's a job.
Thanks, George.
Thank you, George. Bob, you had something in your guys?
No, just that we were hoping that we could address the technology issue through a technology director, and that has really been something that this group has really looked at to make this successful. But we do need to look at the technology piece.
Other questions and comments for the committee? Nancy?
I guess if I were an elementary parent again, I think I would like this. The detail of it is impressive, you know, especially with the math. I mean, you look at the math, and you can certainly keep track of where your child is and what your child is doing. So, I like this. I think it's, it gives you a lot more information than what this ever did. So, congratulations. Once again, I think it shows a great effort, and obviously one that's heading in the right direction. So, keep up the good work, guys. It looks great.
Yeah.
Other question, comments? Nancy, that's the second time you said if you were, I mean, when the little kid's here, when you said, "Don't you like to have little kids?" Now you want to have a new report card. I think Jim better be warned. I'd like to just make a couple of comments. We went, if I remember on my calculations right, over 37 years with the old format for the public that's watching at home. The old format was around for the school system over 37 years with no real changes on it. This committee got together a little over 16 months ago and did diligent work to get to where we are tonight, and getting approval back in October from the board to keep moving forward. They come tonight and discuss where they're at, and now, if I heard right, I guess sometime before summer is over, we're going to hear back from you again. They're about... before summer is over, we're going to hear back from you again, or thereabouts shortly as school begins, of where you are and where you might have an end. And I think that's what, I hope I'm not hearing, I hope I'm not hearing that there's an end, because I think we want to, I would love to see this communications between the elementary schools, keep a bridge for communications of how we do things unified. Each school has its uniqueness, but when it comes down to understanding for individual educations, there has to be some common denominator there so these children move progressively through the school system. So, again, I'm very impressed that for 37 years we did nothing, and now, at no cost to any taxpayers, at no cost to your, our time away from your classrooms, basically, we're getting progress to better get the public understanding what their children are doing. So I want to thank you for your time, and again, I hope the, this program just keeps on going, and maybe, maybe we'll get you that technology director if the budget doesn't get hurt too bad. Any other questions? Ann?
I would just like to comment, this didn't cost the taxpayers anything, but I would like to say that the teachers have worked really, really hard and have spent hours and hours filling out cards. I know how many hours it took me to fill out those cards, and if the technology wasn't working, it had to be done by hand, and I know many teachers said to me they got so confused with their S's. Am I secure? Am I seldom? And fixing mistakes, and long, long hours. So thanks for your hard work. It's appreciated.
Kent?
Mitch? I just wanted to reiterate something that Nancy just said. When you really look over this report card, and you think about what it is that the teachers are thinking about as they're grading it for each student, I mean, these are exactly the kinds of questions and conversations I remember having with all of my child's elementary school teachers, because the report card was totally unsatisfactory. And so we'd come to school during parent conferences and have these, you know, I would sit down with them, and maybe just because I'm a little nuts about education, but I would say, you know, give me a sense of what you're looking at. And they would pull out the sheets, and we would look it over and talk about, oh, this is secure and this is not. So as a parent, I would look at that, and I think parents should do this, when they get these report cards, and they would say, oh, my child's not quite secure in this particular skill. What can I do to help them get secure by the end of the year in that skill? Either come talk to the teacher and figure out a strategy together, or set aside a place at home so they can sit down with their kid for a half an hour and work with them. And this is the kind of detail, I think, that really would give parents that understanding. Plus, with your help, they can understand better, so it's very good. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we appreciate your time. That brings us under item five, personnel. Thanks, everyone. Steve?
We have one item for you tonight under personnel. We have a coaching election of Shannon Fernald for varsity field hockey. Shannon is a teacher at Portsmouth High School. She actually also was a student at Portsmouth High School and played field hockey, went on to play in college, and has coached our freshman and JV programs.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Any other further personnel to come forth tonight?
Mr. Chairman, could I just mention that in your packet, there was another advertisement from Education Week that I mentioned last time would be in your packet, with the advertisement to solicit interested individuals to apply for the position of Technology Director, Portsmouth High School Principal, Portsmouth High School Assistant Principal, and Principal of New Franklin School. That was in April 5th, and we expect, and we are receiving resumes for those positions as we speak, and we're taking information from people and resumes until May 12th.
Questions for Dr. Lister in regards to the postings? Seeing none, seeing no other personal business at this time? We'll move to item six, committee reports. The JVC, the Joint Building Committee, met last Wednesday. It's always nice to get together, but Bob Ufola has kept a very accurate count. We are now at number 73 meetings strong. I think Bob has a near-perfect attendance, he may have missed one, and I know I've missed three. But there is still a fair amount of work, even though we're down under $100,000 in the high school building project. The big items that came up were where we were on items that needed to be finished. You will be getting minutes in your packet in two weeks of what was discussed, but just a quick synopsis of what did go on and what has been completed. The handicap door into the high school at the front entrance is now completed. It was being installed the day that we met. And again, the sound barrier at the music room will, is now installed, and the other big ticket item that was discussed is the drainage to be taken care of as you come down near the athletic storage building, between that and the public pool, an embankment along with proper drainage, and basically taking all the water off of a little over an acre of a half of parking will now be funneled out properly so it doesn't erode and become a cost item, along with proper sewage drainage from the new snack shack that's being built. We are down to approximately $71,500 left to spend. It's harder than spend that than anything else, and again, under the JVC, they have decided at our next meeting, we will put together a list of items that we see needed to complete the high school project. That list will then come back to the, to the school board. The school board will then need to prioritize that to see. There was discussion of that, of an all-purpose field, knowing that that might not be within the total realm of the funding formula there. Bobby Ufola looked at it along with us and described what he kind of envisioned, but there are a number of items that will come back to us under that last $71,500 approximately, along with technology gaps that still exist under the building that we, we put in place. And that's basically it in a nutshell. I don't know if, Ann?
Well, just one other thing that we asked Hutter to get a price for us for the sports turf possibility for the field.
Right, but that's why we're not having the list to you tonight. We're waiting until, I believe it was the first week in May.
May 1st.
Yeah, May 1st, so that we could get it to you. Again, it will be up to the school board on how they prioritize that last $71,500. Any questions on JVC? Seeing none. Under item B, I have asked in our pre-meeting today, I met with Nancy, Bob, and Steve, that the Athletic Committee convene extremely fast. It's time that we move on. We've had two fantastic meetings with the public, allowing public input. For those meetings to be successful, and since elections, and everyone here has taken office, and you're now into your fourth month, I'd like to see the Athletic Committee convene. And in that time, there are two goals that I wish to have you look at, to come back to the full board, and how you get public input, I'll leave up to you. One of those goals is that we need to get off of the first baseline and decide what the contract or agreement with students is, and what it does encompass, whether it encompasses a full year, whether it encompasses our students during participation of sports. We have had contracts there, you've had great public input, we need to take that public input, have you as the committee, the three-member committee, along with Steve Zee at this time, and any coaching officials he wishes to put on that, to discuss the student contract. The goal should be that by, prior to the fall athletic programs beginning, a contract that is agreed upon and voted on by this board be in place. I also feel that we need to get, and there has been some drafts, I know that Steve and Bob have worked on it, but the Athletic Committee needs to also, the second goal is for the committee to look and get a coach's handbook done by August 1st and approved by the school board. Those are two very lofty goals, I believe, but I do believe you are capable of doing it. Steve Zadrivak has stepped up to the plate, filling up many situations, and I just feel it can be done. And again, these things are things that keep hounding us in one way or the other, and my feelings are that this board needs to take action so that we can start next September and cover the bases that we see not covered at this time. So again, Nancy will get a hold, Nancy's the chairperson of that committee, and we'll ask that she get a date and a time so that you can come back to this board in the very near future. And again, I'd like to see this prior to the fall sports season. Thank you. Any other committee reports to come forth? Seeing none. New business? Dr. Lister, any new business?
I don't believe we have any new business at this point.
New business, anybody? Moves this right along. Continuous business. Middle school update. At this time, for the third date, to meet with the city council, tentatively, and we will confirm it as soon as, you didn't have a chance to talk to John Bohinko. I know that Bob tried today after our meeting at noon time to confirm with the mayor and City Manager Bohinko that May 26 can be agreeable.
April.
I'm, April, April 26. I apologize. I do know that that is school vacation time. The last time we spoke, it seemed like that might be agreeable, because we do have a school board meeting the day before that. April 26 seems like a date that City Manager Bohinko, in discussion with the mayor, could work out. And again, it would be at the middle school at that time. If you cannot make that, please let me know, because we're trying to make this so that everyone can make this meeting. What time, Mr. Chair? This would be, again, we were going to start with a walkthrough at 5:30, and the meeting would begin at 7:00. It'd be an hour and a half walkthrough, and there may be one or two walkthroughs, and we'll divide up teams or whatever, and then the meeting would begin, I'm sorry, I think we're going to try to begin at 6:30 so we could be out by 8:30. So it'd be an hour walkthrough is what we're going to try to do. Other updates, I know as you read in the paper, and that Dr. Lister, myself, did observe this, we did go over, we do have a classroom that unfortunately we have had to close down over there. Timing's everything in life. This was due to some heavy water damage that had continuously leaked, causing plaster aperis to fall. No students were in immediate danger, but it was not a good location for where this fell, fell between the two teachers' desks, and it was a fairly sizable piece, and the water will continue to leak in. And we've asked that Ken Lynch get a proposal on what it would cost to repair just, what does he call it? The divots in the roof, where the ceilings meet, and it's approximately ballpark figure, call it $50,000 to $65,000, just to fix the leak. This is nothing, this is not replacing the roof, this is just the leak. Then the ceiling needs to be fixed. We did have both the health department and the building inspector, and I appreciate they came over immediately upon being asked to look at this, and it was their recommendation that this room not be used by students because the constant possibility of other pieces of the ceiling falling at this time. So again, we have taken it into consideration. I commend Dr. Lister, he worked very swiftly once he was notified to make sure, again, nothing serious, and again, there's no immediate danger for any students, but it is constantly being surveilled, and the air quality in that room was tested, and it did meet standards. In fact, no asbestos was found in the air quality at that time. Bob, do you have anything further in regards to the school?
Not at this point.
Questions? Seeing no questions, moving along. Any other continuing business to be brought forth tonight? Seeing none. Financial. Too bad Steve Bott's not here tonight.
The next time.
Yeah, we'll double up on it the next time. The next agenda is in the boardroom back at Little Harbor School. We have two items, and again, we'll have the March financials at that time, we'll also talk about public relations, and we will have a number of other items that have been pending, but those are two items that were, one mandatory, one on, that was requested by Sherry Ham Garrity. Yes?
Brendan. At that time, are we going to talk about the Athletic Director?
No, we're going to put that off to the next one we talk, because Dr. Lister's working on something at this time.
So that'll be in May?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, because it'll be the first week in May, that's correct. Any other agenda items? Any other business to be brought forth? Ann, and then Brendan?
It's not business, actually, but I had the 17th as the date. That's, that's been canceled and the.
For the city council?
For the city council.
Yes, they could not do.
So the 26 replaces that.
The 26 replaces that, and Ann, keep it in pencil as I see you writing.
[laughing]
This is the third move, and again, it's because of, you know, both religious holidays and other things that have come up.
Yeah, okay.
Brendan?
First, I'd like to thank the students for coming out tonight. I think it was great that you all came. And in talking to my shadow behind me here, we would like to make a motion that on April 21st, which is a Friday, approving the, from approval from the principal here, that we have a no homework day at the high school, and including in that no homework day, there's a softball game at the high school, a boys' lacrosse game at the high school, baseball and tennis are playing away in Londonderry, and that our students come out and support our athletic teams and support our school with school spirit, so.
I'll second that.
Moving to seconded. Totally unusual. Dr. Lister, any comments?
I have no comment.
[laughing]
I have to answer to the teachers.
Is this test period at all time? I want to make sure we're not getting duped here. Is there any test period time?
So can we have our shadows vote on that, instead of us? Have the shadows vote?
Could I recommend that we, that Mr. Zadrivak and I look at that, that day to see if there are any conflicts, but, and also that we put this on the agenda for the students' school board meeting and have them discuss that as well as, as an item?
Is it not the Friday before April vacation? Do you think it is monumental? [laughing]
I have to caution, we don't know what tests and so forth are coming up. And again, Friday, is it the Friday night they're asking for?
Yes.
Or is it Friday into Saturday?
Some people will be going.
Friday into school vacation.
Friday into school vacation.
Mr. Chair? May I ask the maker of the motion and the second, or perhaps a friendly amendment that says the motion is to ask the acting superintendent to work with the faculty to look at the possibility of having a no homework day on?
Friday the 21st.
That Friday the 21st?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Andrew, I just wanted to, while this motion is being discussed. I do support it. I just would warn the maker of the motion that occasionally teachers assign long-term projects and give you vacation to work on it, whereas they, they might assign it weeks and weeks before vacation and then say, you know, oh, let me do the first day you come back from vacation, or things like that, maybe push those due dates back a day, something like that. Might work out a little bit better. I know, I know that I already have a paper due the first day I come back from vacation that I got assigned today. So I'm just do, little caveat there.
Yours will be done before vacation, though, won't it, Andrew?
Yes, he'll be all finished on the 21st.
See, so. Not Sunday night, which is my usual bonus.
Further discussion?
John? I do want to compliment the maker of the motion and the seconder of the motion, because the intent, obviously, is clear, and that is the spirit of the school, the school board has been talking about for a long time. What I hear back from parents was what Dr. Lister and acting, are you assistant superintendent Zadrivak or acting principal? I guess you're both, has just been outstanding, so I do want to compliment you on the intent behind your motion, and would certainly ask that the principal working with the teachers do what they can to address the principal behind the motion.
Steve? And I know Anna is looking forward to being principal and assistant superintendent. I encourage all of the students to do the same thing I encouraged her to do, which is to think of what would you change, given a day? What would you change? What would you like to see changed in either the schools that you're in or the community? And bring that to the people that you're shadowing so that they can work with you to help understand how the positions you're in could they can work with you to help understand how the positions you're in could actually help, uh, you know, have that change happen. So, I, I consider that one of the ideas, I'm sure of many, that will be brought to us as these students take a, a active, responsible role in leadership in the community. Thank you, Steve. Any other we need to-
Do we want to vote on it?
Yeah, we need to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
They're going to look into it.
Okay, they will look into it, and we'll get back to us and let us know.
Thank you.
Um, one other note is that I'm going to have a total of, uh, three calendar dates, two in June and one in July for our second retreat of the year that's been requested. Uh, so, please, when I bring these towards you, start to look, that will be at the April meeting. We will have a total of three dates to look at you. One of them will be in the evening, and two of them will be either weekends or, or, or some type of combination, because, again, I don't want to interfere with family obligations as we get closer into the summer months, but again, I think it's important that we have it, see where we're at. But again, if we can do it in the evening, we discussed that. We only have one meeting in July. Maybe it would be the second meeting in July to have this. Might be nice to have it in June so you don't have that worry, but, uh, again, I'll give you a total of three dates, and I'll, when it, they'll, they'll be presented. Bob and I have been talking along with Nancy on that.
Uh, just a question about that. This retreat is sometime in the summer. Is this something that you and you will run or Bob will run, or is this something that we can consider hiring an outside facilitator to come in and-
There will probably be something that Bob will run. We actually did discuss bringing in, um, actually Ted Comstock to discuss certain things from the State School Boards Association. Might be something that would be, and he facilitates, so he might do that. So, it's, again, something that we're kind of developing at this point to-
Welcome.
-cover grounds, uh, and, and utilize time. And we, that's the other reason, I'm going to give you three dates, because that's what I'm going to tell him. If he can attend one of these three dates, uh, we'll see which one, or which of the three dates he can attend best.
And you envision this being what, a half-day, how long?
A half-day at most.
So, three, four-hour type of-
I'd say probably four hours. That's why I think you could do it in the evening, uh, possibly, so we're not interrupting the summer flow. And, I'm sorry, Andrew?
I just wanted to make the board and fellow students and the community aware that tomorrow night at the high school, there will be a concert, uh, the Who Said Choirs Can't Rock concert, run by, uh, senior Patrick Doro, very talented senior. Um, I'm sure everyone knows of him, and I'm sure that I will be performing. I think there's some other students here as well who will be performing tomorrow night. It starts at 7:00 PM. Tickets, I think, are five dollars, and I would recommend that any board members interested would love to come down, and anyone else in, also out in the community would, I definitely encourage everyone to come out for that, so. In, in the, in the light of supporting sports teams and things like that, it's also important we support the music and drama programs, so.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. Dr. Lister?
I was just going to say, if Dr. Childman has some other, um, ideas for the retreat, I'd be glad to talk to you about those.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
John?
My student, Ms. Hammer, and I would like to make the most important motion of the evening, and that is that we adjourn.
Oh, I have something to add.
I will let Nancy quickly say what she needs to.
I just want to let everyone know that the weekend before last, Portsmouth hosted the, um, basketball tournament for Special Olympics, New Hampshire, and we had eighty, over eighty teams from all over the state with Special Olympians playing, um, all weekend long, and we used all of our schools as venues. We had, um, Greenland, um, Rye, um, schools from all over that allowed us to use their facilities, and I just want to take a minute to thank Dr. Lister for organizing that entire weekend with the Special Olympics people, but, um, Bob certainly, um, was the spirit, the, the, the power behind the throne, and, um, we just, my son, just, all of us, just had an absolute blast. That's the only way I can think of to say it. And we cooked spaghetti for a thousand people in the Portsmouth High School cafeteria on Saturday night with, using volunteers, and, um, I want to thank Kent for scrubbing the, um, tub. We, we put the tomato sauce. I mean, it was-
I don't know how we got that in.
Oh, it was spotless by the time he finished with his wife scrubbing it with-
Gina did it, I didn't.
Oh, my God. And, um, it was really fun. We just, we just had such a great time. There was such, talk about spirit and cooperation, and thank you, Bob, once again for doing an outstanding job.
And we still have plenty of garlic bread left. I don't know who donated the garlic bread, but I cut for over three hours straight.
Could I also just thank everyone, all the volunteers in the community who came out to help us as well, because it was a community-wide effort that made the, the weekend so successful. So, thank you, everyone.
Now, John, let's move to the question. All those in favor, adjourn.
Aye.
Any opposed?